Good morning. This hearing of the Subcommittee on Horticulture, Research, Biotechnology and Foreign Agriculture to review the impact of enforcement activities by the Department of Labor on specialty crop growers will come to order. I'm going to read an opening statement followed by my colleague, Mr. Schrader from Oregon. And again, I would like to thank you all for being here today to discuss this issue. It's become an increasingly difficult challenge for farmers in their day-to-day operations. The purpose of today's hearing on the Subcommittee on Horticulture, Research, Biotechnology and Foreign Agriculture is to address the growing concern of the Department of Labor's use of the so-called hot goods provision under the Fair Labor Standards Act of 1938. The original purpose of this provision, which again was written in 1938, was to protect workers from poor working conditions and negligible employers. Let me be clear: neither I nor anyone else on this committee condones violations in regard to the Fair Labor Standards Act in any way. We believe it is important to provide fair wages for agricultural workers. Yet this law was not intended for use with regards to fresh fruits and vegetables, which perish more easily than a manufactured good. That said, we are aware of multiple ineffective tools the Department of Labor can use without having to resort to their discretionary authority under the hot goods provision. To be clear, the Labor Department has authority to compel specialty crop producers and packers to reimburse workers when wages fall short of the minimum wage requirement without using the hot goods provision. This issue that we will discuss today is the Department of Labor's abuse of this discretion when applying the hot goods provision to perishable agricultural commodities. In these cases, producers are not only liable for civil fines and back wages to workers, but the fines and penalties pale in comparison to the economic damages brought about by the Department of Labor's destruction of their crops. The Department does not set fire to these crops, but they do create a scenario under which the crops would naturally perish. The Department relayed to us that they used this provision sparingly in the past. What they have failed to acknowledge is the inexcusable use of a tool which Congress never granted or intended: that is, the tool of fear and intimidation. The Department has used this fear far too often to extort concessions from producers with little, if any, proof of wrongdoing. This committee recognizes the importance to assure worker-related benefits and rights as the Department's mission statement refers. I hope we all would agree that these rights are not only established in law, but in the fabric of the rights guaranteed to us in our Constitution. The Department's actions are so intrusive that they threaten the ability of employees to enjoy these rights by extorting employers into bankruptcy enclosure. We fear that this direction that the Department is pursuing regarding berry producers in the Pacific Northwest, in at least one of these cases, the producer courageously chose to fight this rogue agency and prevailed in federal court against the Department where the Department of Labor was found to have forced the producer to admit guilt under duress. We find ourselves in a situation where the Department is attempting to intimidate this producer by using what it believes to be the apparently inexhaustible supply of taxpayer funds to bankrupt this producer through a seemingly endless appeals process in the courts. Yet what has not been adjudicated is the original claim by the Department of Labor that the producer had more than 1,300 so-called ghost workers who never received compensation. 1,300 workers would be like having the entire high school where I graduated in the field. Where did this claim come from? What proof does the Department have? How many of these ghost workers have come forward? By last count, a mere 72 have come forward. Rather than acknowledge the arbitrary nature of the Department of Labor's accusations regarding this farmer, this rogue agency will instead argue that the problem is with the workers and the farmers and not their methodology. I think it is clear that the problem is with the agency. Although this case is specific to a certain region, the committee is convinced that without proper examination of the Department of Labor's actions, the pervasive nature of these actions will begin to affect farmers nationwide. In fact, in my state, in Georgia, producers have reported to my office that although a hot goods order has not been used, it has been threatened several times. In examining the inexcusable nature of the Department's actions and the arbitrary nature of its evaluation methods, I hope that we can gain a greater understanding of this escalating threat and the avenues for remedy. Before The first today are two witnesses. Dr. David Wile is the Administrator of the Wage and Hour Division of the U.S. Department of Labor, and Mr. Brad Avakin is the Commissioner of the Oregon Bureau of Labor and Industries. Gentlemen, we look forward to both of your testimony. I now recognize my colleague, Mr. Schrader, for any opening statement that he may have.
Thank you, Chairman Scott. Appreciate having this hearing here today. I think it’s extremely important. I want to thank Dr. Wile and Commissioner Avakin for coming before the committee so we hopefully can understand better these enforcement actions that have occurred on our Oregon farms. The Department of Labor has frankly continued to use, as you outlined, this hot goods provision despite the fact that a federal court has determined that this action imperishable products on farms is actually coercive in nature. That conclusion is pretty troubling to me, and I think should be troubling to everyone here, and is the reason we’re taking the actions today. Give everyone a little background, a little context for the hearing today. Originally passed during the New Deal era, as Chairman Scott alluded to, the Fair Labor Standards Act was intended to protect American workers and to stimulate the economy, both. The FLSA established Department of Labor’s Wage and Hour Division to ensure that workers are fairly compensated for their labor and to prevent the scourge of child labor. The FLSA continues to play an important role in protecting American workers and children from unscrupulous workplace practices, as it should. Illegally employing children, not fully compensating workers for their labor, is not condoned by anybody. However, my support for the FLSA should not be construed to represent any support of the recent actions taken by the Department of Labor. In the summer of 2012, Department of Labor used a provision within the FLSA, so-called hot goods provision, to quarantine and confiscate Oregon farmers’ perishable products, thereby imperiling and threatening their very livelihood. In taking the actions it did, DOL ignored its own historical precedent, violated constitutionally protected due process, and subjected family farms to crushing economic harm in these very tough times. Since the summer of 2012, I’ve been working diligently with members of the Oregon delegation and this committee to gather data from DOL on these enforcement actions and the utilization of the hot goods provision as a tool against agricultural wage and hour violations. I can firmly say, over the last two years, I’ve been severely disappointed. Give you one example. Department of Labor has repeatedly told my office that comprehensive data on the historical usage of hot goods legislation or hot goods provisions is unavailable. Yet, you go to the Congressional Research Service, they found very quickly and very clearly that the first such application of hot goods authority to perishable agricultural products occurred in just the last few years, since 2008. That’s 70 years, folks, 70 years. It’s also become crystal clear that Department of Labor has been doted by outside special interest groups in the last few years to use this hot goods authority without any regard to the unique application in the agricultural sector. Furthermore, the actions taken in Oregon were done with complete disregard to constitutionally protected due process under the Fifth and Fourteenth Amendments. Contextually and historically, the Department of Labor investigations and process for adjudicating violations of fair labor standards usually follows a couple of key principles. When all the fact-finding steps have been completed, the employer or the employer’s representative will be told whether violations have occurred, and if so, what the violations are and how to correct them. If back wages are owed, the employer will be asked to pay the back wages. In the absence of an employer voluntarily doing so, the Wage and Hour Division may seek to restrain the shipments of goods. This Department of Labor policy language indicates employers should be given the opportunity to work with the DOL inspectors to correct the violations and pay back wages before the threat of a hot goods objection. The hot goods application, however, has different impacts on employers in different sectors. Chairman alluded to that. Textiles, durable goods, even processed or frozen foods can sit idle in the supply chain for weeks or months on end without having their market values compromised. The same simply cannot be said for blueberries or other perishable ag commodities, the value of which can be seriously impacted in a matter of days. In the case of one of my constituents, in addition to the almost $170,000 in fines and alleged back wages paid directly to the Department of Labor, he lost another $90,000 in revenue based on rotting berries during the imposition of the hot goods objection. When improperly used in the perishable ag sector, the threat of hot goods objection becomes coercive. As millions of dollars of blueberries sat idle in this supply chain, my constituents were forced to make a business decision. Meet DOL, Department of Labor demands, sign a consent judgment, waive their rights to contest the allegations, pay substantial fines, or lose their crops and potentially their farm. As the Department of Labor continues to defend this coercive action, it’s important, I think, for everyone in the room to understand that all this was done before the farmers were even informed about the specific charges they faced. That’s just not right. The consent judgments that my constituents ultimately signed to remedy the alleged violations did not include the administrative review process I outlined before. These farmers had never even previously been cited for a wage and hour violation, folks, before the Department of Labor jumped to this drastic and draconian action. Actually, when I had talked to the folks in Washington, D.C., when I first heard of this, about, well, when is this hot goods legislation or this provision used, I was assured that it was only used as a last resort and only on repeat offenders. Obviously, the Department did not follow its own policies. Fortunately, two of these farmers actually decided to fight this case in court. The Chair alluded to that. I’m going to read a section here with the Chair’s permission on what the court found. While the defendants were aware of the coercive nature utilized by the Department of Labor at the time the consent judgments were entered, the nature of their operations combined with the Department of Labor’s departure from its usual course of conduct in using the hot goods objection with respect to perishable goods complicated the defendant’s ability and analysis of how to proceed in challenging the Department of Labor and the judgments it obtained. The Department of Labor had previously allowed, an alleged violator, to place the proposed back wages and penalty into escrow to allow the hot goods objection to be lifted while the violations were being litigated. However, the defendants were completely caught—well, I’ll read the Department of Labor’s —the judges—however, the defendants were caught off-guard in these cases when the Department of Labor changed its tactics and insisted on a consent decree before lifting the objections. While the proposed back wages and penalty were substantial, potential losses due to continuing hot goods objection pending litigation dwarfed the proposed judgment’s impact on the defendants. Defendants, as discussed below, were left with no choice but to accept the judgments. Moreover, given the Department of Labor’s new posture, it is not inconceivable that mounting an attack on the judgment without further information could have had uncertain repercussions for the defendants in any future interactions with the Department of Labor in view of its more aggressive tactics. It could be argued, the court continues, as suggested above, that the defendant could have sought a temporary restraining order to lift the hot goods objection, permit the review of Department of Labor’s assessment. However, the Department of Labor’s imposition of the hot goods objection to highly perishable products and the requirement of immediate admission of defeat without any recourse to the courts unfairly stacked the deck against the Ditchens and Pan American. Given the nature of the business in which these defendants engage, it’s not difficult to understand why they would conclude that the resort to such options without further information would be extremely risky, given the potential staggering economic losses. Moreover, this court can think of no good reason in support of the Department of Labor’s decision to refuse the accommodation of having defendants place the penalties, wages, and escrow as a condition for lifting the hot goods objection pending administrative and court review. Given the economic duress placed upon the defendants in order to secure the consent judgments, the judgments should be vacated. This is pretty strong condemnation language by the court. To me, Department of Labor is overzealous, and inappropriate use of this hot goods authority on Oregon farmers was completely uncalled for. It’s led Chairman Scott and I to introduce H.R. 1387 that clarifies the law on this issue. This simple piece of legislation states that the Department of Labor can continue to use hot goods objection on any product other than perishable agricultural commodities. That’s very consistent, I think, with the original law and its intent. The Department of Labor can continue its inappropriate—if the Department of Labor continues its inappropriate use of the hot goods objections, farmers’ livelihoods are going to be seriously jeopardized across this country. To say I remain troubled regarding how Department of Labor’s pursued hot goods provision, its lack of cooperation as we’ve tried to get a better understanding of why and how is an understatement. Frankly, the Department of Labor, as I’ve said, did not follow the appropriate process set out by its own rules. It used faulty methodology in coming to its findings. It coerced farmers into forfeiting their rights by threatening their very livelihoods. They’ve denied American farmers, fellow Oregonians, the very due process our forefathers built our country on, and undermined their faith in their government. That’s a sad comment. I yield back, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Schrader. The Chair would request that members submitting any opening statements that they may have for the record so that the witnesses may begin their testimony and ensure there is ample time for questions. I do expect us to have at least two rounds of questions today. I’d like to welcome our panel of witnesses to the table. We have two witnesses today. The first is Dr. David Wile, and the second is Mr. Brad Avakin. Dr. Wile, please begin when you’re ready.
Thank you, and good morning, Chairman Scott, Ranking Member Schrader, and members of the Subcommittee. Thank you for the invitation to testify at this hearing on the Fair Labor Standards Act’s hot goods provision, an important tool that we use carefully and appropriately. Mr. Chairman, I want to assure you that the Department of Labor and its Wage Now Division that I proudly lead recognize the importance of the U.S. agriculture industry and the critical role it plays in not only putting food on our tables, but also creating jobs and helping our economy to prosper. The Wage and Hour Division’s work is critical to ensuring a level playing field for the vast majority of businesses who play by the rules and in protecting the rights and working conditions of agricultural workers. All told, between fiscal year 2009 and 2013, Wage and Hour concluded nearly 7,500 agricultural investigations, collecting more than $20 million in back wages for more than 46,600 agricultural workers. The FLSA was born during a time of great economic suffering, when the Great Depression touched every corner of this nation. Congress included in the act language commonly referred to as the hot goods provision, the basic purpose of which is to exclude from interstate commerce goods produced in violation of the statute’s minimum wage, overtime, and child labor provisions. In encouraging Congress to adopt the hot goods provision, President Roosevelt outlined its objectives, stating, “So to protect the fundamental interests of free labor and free people, goods produced under conditions which do not meet rudimentary standards of decency should be regarded as contraband and ought not to be allowed to pollute the channels of interstate trade.” Congress crafted the hot goods provision to apply expansively to all goods. Courts have upheld our use of this provision many times in the context of preventing the illegal shipment of tainted goods in agriculture, garment, and many other industries. We know that the majority of employers are doing right by their workers and the law, but we continue to find violations impacting the wages and working conditions of some of our country’s most vulnerable workers. In a majority of cases, Wage and Hour is able to reach a resolution with employers by working together. Occasionally, we do uncover labor violations that necessitate the use of the hot goods provision in order to obtain remedies for the affected workers and protect the stream of commerce and responsible producers. The hot goods provision is only one of several tools available to Wage and Hour, and while not a tool we use frequently, it has been an important part of our enforcement program since the Fair Labor Standards Act was enacted. We also know that the provision is a strong tool, and accordingly, we have created careful procedures regarding when and how to use it. But it is also important to understand that we use our enforcement tools in conjunction with other methods of increasing compliance. Wage and Hour continues to recognize that enforcement alone will never be sufficient to achieve the agency’s mission. Education and outreach to the employer community to provide and promote voluntary compliance has been and will continue to be one of our key strategies for promoting sustained and industry-wide compliance. This has been particularly important in the agricultural context, where since fiscal year 2009, Wage and Hour has conducted nearly 600 outreach events and presentations that were specifically geared to providing valuable information and compliance assistance to the agricultural industry. I want to briefly share a success story that illustrates this integrated approach. Wage and Hour began investigations in New Jersey, North Carolina, and Michigan during the 2009 harvest season and uncovered systemic labor violations among blueberry growers and farm labor contractors, including the illegal employment of children. In addition to recovering several thousand dollars in back wages and assessing penalties, Wage and Hour undertook a comprehensive approach to ending these dangerous practices. Before the 2010 harvest was to begin, our offices in these three states took proactive steps to ensure compliance with agricultural standards by conducting outreach to employers. We met with farmers, farm labor contractors, and industry associations to provide them with meaningful compliance assistance. The following year, employers took important steps to ensure that children were not working in the fields. No child labor violations were found in the subsequent year in North Carolina and New Jersey, and only one farm in Michigan had those violations. This is truly a win-win for everybody and a great example of how our efforts are aimed at helping farms and farm workers prosper together. In enacting the Fair Labor Standards Act, Congress acknowledged the inherent competitive nature of the market and recognized that without strong enforcement mechanisms, workers and employers would fall ill—to victims to the ills of unfair competition and exploitive labor practices. When deployed carefully and in concert with other tools of outreach and enforcement, I strongly believe we can achieve the statutory objectives entrusted to me of providing a fair day’s pay for a fair day’s work. Thank you again for the opportunity to testify today, and I am happy to answer your questions.
Thank you, Dr. Wile.
Mr. Chair, Committee members, thank you for inviting me today to discuss Oregon’s perspective on the use of hot goods in the investigations of perishable agricultural products. My name is Brad Avakin, and I serve as Oregon’s Commissioner of Labor and Industries, which in our state is a statewide nonpartisan elected position. Our agency supports our local industries with technical assistance. We train much of Oregon’s workforce, and we enforce the state’s civil rights laws in housing, public accommodations, and employment. We also enforce the state’s wage and hour laws, making sure that workers get paid the wages that they have rightfully earned. As a part of that, we license all of the state’s farm labor contractors, and we manage the state’s farm labor unit. We view strong wage enforcement as a matter of basic fairness, not only for the workers, but also to make sure that the vast majority of employers that do play by the rules enjoy a level playing field on which to compete. We conduct about 2,000 wage investigations a year, and in addition to that, we field about 20,000 calls a year from Oregon businesses seeking help navigating their way through complicated state and federal laws. Our timber, agricultural, and nursery industries play a critical economic role in our communities. They employ over 54,000 workers. We need strong wage enforcement, but we also must ensure due process for Oregon growers, and it’s for this reason we have deep concerns about the use of the hot goods provision with perishable agricultural goods on our farms. The imminent perishable nature of produce often renders contesting a hot goods motion moot, because if the produce spoils, its value is converted to nothing. The farmer then has diminished or no ability at all to pay the employees wages if wages are truly due. In fact, the actions of a farmer facing the choice of having their blueberries spoil in some warehouse during a protracted legal process on a hot goods motion is far from voluntary. voluntary when he or she is faced with signing a hot goods consent judgment. This imbalance of power between the government and the accused in this kind of a hot goods action, we think obscures any meaningful due process and, in addition, risks violating constitutional search and seizure and Commerce Clause protections. In addition, requiring farmers to waive their rights of appeal just runs contrary to basic rules of fairness. Now, when applied appropriately, we do think that the hot goods provision is an effective tool in wage enforcement, but it should be limited to the enforcement of non-perishable items as originally intended and as those traditionally associated with industries like the garment industry. The United States Department of Labor is our sister organization, and I must say that we value our partnership with them very much. We work to stay in close communication so that we can both effectively coordinate our investigative resources. We believe in strong wage enforcement. We also believe that meaningful action against employers that fail to pay their wages can be taken without violating the fundamental principles of due process. Mr. Chair, I want to thank you again for your consideration of the issue and for the committee's interest in Oregon's perspective.
Thank you, Mr. Avakin. I have a couple of questions and just would like to remind members that they will be recognized for questioning in order of seniority for members who were here at the start of the hearing. After that, members will be recognized in order of arrival. Certainly appreciate everybody's understanding of that. I now recognize myself for five minutes. Dr. Wile, what is the budget for the Wage Now Division, budget request for 2014?
Thank you. I want to give you the precise number, $220 million. Mr. Chairman.
Okay, I show your request is 243, but that's fair enough. So you said that you've got a $240 million budget. Do you pay your legal fees out of that budget, or are they paid out of the Department of Justice?
I'm pausing only because I, we have a solicitor's office that undertakes legal actions for the Wage Now Division, as it does for other agencies, which has its own budget, and they provide us legal assistance in all matters, as they do for other agencies of the Department of Labor.
In other words, you've got a quarter of a billion dollars, and there's another agency's pot that could also be dipped into when bringing these charges against a U.S. farmer?
Well, we have resources to undertake our mission and our statutory obligations in regards to enforcement, voluntary compliance, and our other activities.
Where the farmer has to use their private money and their private assets to defend themselves. Let me, let me read you a definition, if I could. Extortion is the criminal offense of obtaining money, property, or services from a person, entity, or institution through coercion. Coercion is the practice of compelling a person or manipulating them to behave in an involuntary way, whether through action or inaction, by use of threats, intimidation, trickery, or some other form of pressure, force, or duress. Dr. Wile, we've acknowledged that you have a quarter of a billion dollar budget that's government funds. Certainly, the farmer has to pay for it out of their private funds. The U.S. District Court specifically said that your department forced a farmer to sign under duress that they would not seek a legal remedy in the court that's guaranteed by the United States Constitution. Do you believe that when the farmer uses their private funds, their personal dollars, their family dollars that they've worked for generations to build and to grow that farm with, do you believe that when you have in excess of a quarter of a billion dollars to use against them, that when that farmer defends themselves and the court rules in favor of the farmer, do you believe that the agency should return the farmer's legal fees to them?
Thank you for your question, Congressman. I would begin by saying the budget that you reference is to allow us to enforce a set of statutes that cover 135 million American workers in 7.3 million workplaces directed towards every sector of the economy, and it's in that context we deploy those resources very carefully through the range of enforcement and outreach tools that we have available to us.
Sir, let me rephrase the question then. When you, when your agency, when the people in your agency, who I would respectfully submit that if they did not work for the federal government, they would be held in criminal court for engaging in the coercion and the duress that the United States District Court said was used against this farmer, what recourse should the farmer have against your agency when the court rules in favor of the farmer?
Well, I would, I would begin, first of all, I can't directly comment on the particular case because, as you know, it's being litigated. I will say we undertake all of our enforcement activity, including in agriculture and with respect to the hot goods, as well as any enforcement activity, with very carefully crafted procedures and with a very well-trained investigative workforce.
Dr. Wile, with due respect, if you were operating in a fair and equitable manner, we would not be here today. And in this, when the government, when people in charge of agencies use the laws in a manner that the United States courts say have put the American citizen under duress and violated that American citizen's constitutional rights, then with due respect, there should be consequences for the people that lead that agency and for the people who engaged in that duress against the American citizen. And I would respectfully submit that if there were, we would not be here today, and the conduct of your agency would be much better. With that, I yield to my colleague, Mr. Schrader.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Dr. Wile, Dr. Wile or Wile?
Wile.
Excuse me, sir. Dr. Wile.
Thank you, Congressman.
How often has the hot goods provision been used prior to this last decade on perishable agricultural products?
In the period 2001 to 2013, we've used it 28 times.
How about prior to that? I was asking, prior to the last decade?
I don't have in front of me figures regarding prior use of that. I know the first time hot goods was invoked in the agricultural industry, and this was towards a processor, was in 1946.
And then processor, that is obviously not a perishable situation. We're talking about either frozen or packed or canned type of product. So we're concerned at this hearing about the use of hot goods with regard to perishable products. I think we would all agree that, as Commissioner Avakin indicated, it's a fine tool to use on non-perishable products because the value of the product doesn't deteriorate. But we're talking perishable, so the answer to your question is zero prior to your use in this last decade. Why were these three growers targeted in Oregon in 2012? Why were they picked on? Why'd you pick out these three?
Sure. And again, I can't speak to the particulars of this case in litigation, but I would be pleased to speak about how we target our investigation resources generally. We undertake what are called directed investigations throughout the country based on a very careful assessment of facts about the prevalence of violations of the Fair Labor Standards Act across different industries in different parts of the country. All of our regions and our district offices engage in a review of industries in their area in terms of prospective violations.
Why the, pardon, I have limited time for questions. Why, all of a sudden, this newfound interest in using hot goods in perishable products? Why was that determined to be something that hadn't been done before in the last few years seems to have been popular with the Department?
Well, I would, I would first point out, and I'd be happy to look back prior to the period where you asked your question, but from 2001 to 2008, during President Bush's administration, we used the authority 17 times, and then we used it 11 again, up until, in terms of closed cases since 2009.
These are all perishable products?
These are in agriculture.
In perishable products?
Well, yes, I mean, I would certainly acknowledge agriculture is perishable products. I think--
Well, I guess I would like, after the hearing, for you to get me that information because there's a big difference as we've tried to make very crystal clear between processed products and fresh products. Had any, either of these farmers, any of these farmers had, in Oregon anyway, have a past history of violation, labor law?
While we use, as I said, in terms of setting up our directed investigation protocols, part of we look at is past behavior of individual employers. Our overall concern is driven by the prevalence of violations in a sector--
Do these farmers have past violations, child labor laws?
Again, I don't want to talk about the particular ones in litigation. In general, in agriculture--
I can give you the answer, actually. The answer is no. And it was clear to the Department when they came on the farm that these were good actors with no previous violations. Is it standard practice now for Department of Labor to quarantine perishable products when you're doing an investigation without due process for these guys?
So our procedure is to assure compliance with the law. We have used it in closed cases 11 times over a period of time, or 28 times over a period of time. We've done 7,500 agriculture investigations.
So is this your first choice, then? This is something you go to right away?
Absolutely not, Congressman, and let me, let me clarify that.
Well, then, why did you use it right away on these farmers that had no prior history of any violation? I'm confused.
Congressman, we use a procedure where we find violations, we undertake discussions with the grower or farm labor contractor involved--
So you conclude these people were guilty just because of the investigation? It's my understanding that in the American judicial system, in administrative system, people are not judged guilty to have a violation, maybe an alleged violation, but that needs to be investigated, and that takes time. You imposed the hot goods order against Oregon farmers prior to even concluding your investigation. Do you think that's fair?
Congressman, I would characterize our investigation procedure different than you did in any investigation--
I'm just describing what actually happened. I know what you'd like to do, but I'm describing what actually happened. That's incontrovertible. The United States of America has said so.
Sure. No, and Congressman, I'm very proud of the investigators, the 1,100 people who work for my agency, because they're trained in any investigation to undertake their evaluations of violations prior to meeting with the employer, and then when they meet with the employer, they have a systematic discussion of what they found in the course of their investigations that are based on discussions with workers, the employer--
Sorry to interrupt you again, but that's not what happened in Oregon. You know, this hot goods threat was levied, as the court described very clearly, without the opportunity for the farmer to protect his livelihood, his investment, his crop. It was coercive, completely coercive. I would use the word extortion. Department of Labor, in my opinion, with these Oregon farmers, extorted money from them, completely inappropriate. I mean, I just don't see how you can stand to defend that. I'm not, I think the men and women that work in the Department of Labor, great folks trying to do the right thing, were obviously told, given a directive, to impose this arcane, inappropriate use of hot goods in this perishable commodity area. You're violating people's due rights. That's not good advertising for what the government of the United States is all about. Our government, we the people, being attacked by our own government without due process. Does it bother you that a federal judge has clearly indicated this is a coercive tactic used on perishable agricultural products? Does that bother you, Doctor?
Congressman, courts have upheld the use of the hot goods provision since the passage of the Fair Labor Standards Act, beginning with the Supreme Court in 1941. So we--
We're talking about perishable products again. You keep diverting over to other goods. We all acknowledge that other goods, that's fine, but we're talking about perishable products. What courts have upheld that, that use of hot goods in perishable products? Now, we have this recent decision that clearly states it's not been used before, and this is the first case that unfortunately has to come before the Court of the United States, again, using taxpayer dollars, trying to defend the basic rights of people when it should be crystal clear to the Department that this is an inappropriate use.
Congressman, the statute does not exclude any sector based on perishability. As you know, the statute has only two very specific exclusions in terms of common carriers and those who receive goods who are not knowledgeable about the good faith--
So what about the courts, this is the Court of the United States government, federal government, said that usual practice had been to lift the restriction, the quarantine, if you will, of hot goods once the back fines and alleged wages were paid into escrow. Why was that not acceptable to Department of Labor in this case?
And again, as you know, I can't comment directly on the case because it is in litigation. We have very clear procedures. I want to go back to the fact--
Well, this was your policy.
Yes, sir.
The court has done some research too, not just myself and the committee, but they've done research. They said the historical precedent had been once those fines and the alleged wages were held in escrow, while an investigation could continue, while the farmer could contest that, get the facts, to be able to understand what was going on, the hot goods objection was lifted. Why, why, why is that not, is that your new practice? You're not going to do that anymore?
We have a practice, we do use escrow in certain cases as judged by a case-by-case basis by the investigator in consultation with the district office and the regional office of our agency.
So why did you persecute these particular farmers, then? I guess I'm curious. Why not do the escrow? That seems very fair, respects due process, and still gets you the money and potentially the, these ghost workers, the money they're due.
The, the use of escrow is undertaken in cases where it is the judgment of the investigator, again, in consultation with other offices, our regional offices, as well as our solicitor's office, that there is progress in negotiations in good faith on the part of the employer where back wages can be put in escrow and goods--
Well, they did that. They did that. So why was the quarantine not lifted?
Well, in the, I can't comment on the particulars of this case. I can comment that our procedures are very clear in what instances where we use escrow, and it's where we're having progress towards resolution, which we fully acknowledge--
You had progress. You had progress here. I mean, you're violating your own standards. You're violating, the Department violated what you just said. It's sad. This is, it's almost indefensible. You keep digging a bigger hole for the Department of Labor with your testimony, sir.
Well, I don't think so. What I'm trying to clarify is that we have very clear procedures and practices that we do institute, and certainly under my watch. I'm very aware about the issue of perishability that you're raising, and that's why, in order to both protect workers and protect the employers who are complying with the law, the vast majority of employers, of farmers who are living within the statute, are also being protected by our procedures, which, again, in only 28 of 7,500 investigations have we actually used. We have used outreach--
And you can't even describe whether or not these were all perishable cases. I would hope that in the future, the Department of Labor be a lot more respectful of Americans' due process, and if they're going to use this, this hot goods legislation, it would not be used in a perishable case, or if it was, that once these workers, once these farmers actually paid their fine, their alleged fine, and their alleged back, back wages, that the Department would at least let these products go forward so American commerce could resume. We're in tough times right now, Dr. Wile, and I'll yield back.
Thank you, Ms. Schrader. We're going to try to hold to the five-minute limit, then we'll, as I said, we'll have multiple rounds of questioning, and I'd like to recognize Ms. Hartzler.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If a farmer, Dr. Wile, this is a question for you. If a farmer offers all of his or her workers a compensation package based on performance, and those workers were to take advantage of that opportunity by working harder to receive the higher compensation, is that a violation of the Fair Labor Standards Act? Yes or no, fine?
No, that would not be a violation, as long as they earned at least the minimum wage for the individual worker.
In a recent enforcement action, the Department of Labor-- In a recent enforcement action, the Department of Labor determined that anything over 60 pounds of blueberries picked per hour to be abnormal when expert sources and research has proven that normal is anywhere between 100 and 200 pounds. Is it normal practice for the Department of Labor to ignore the research of experts in agriculture production and harvesting when taking enforcement actions against farmers?
Congresswoman, we undertake in order to make an assessment of whether the piece rate that's being provided and the actual work done complies with minimum wage standards through a combination of interviews with workers in the fields at the actual employer involved, a review of payroll records, and a discussion with the employer and any farm labor contractors in order to ascertain whether the individual workers have been paid according to the minimum wage. We are increasingly using time studies based on the activities of workers in the field at the time of the investigation, because, as you know, there's an enormous variability in the rate of any farm activity that can be done based on particular conditions, harvests, even sometimes subsequent rounds harvesting the same crop can yield different kinds of rates of output. And so, that's why we have to look very closely and rely, in particular, on employers keeping good records so that we can ascertain whether a piece rate meets the minimum standards or goes beyond that.
So, as you recall, many of these workers are paid based on productivity or an hourly rate, so are these workers compensated by the Department of Labor for the time they are unable to work due to these interviews you just talked about?
We try to, to the best of our ability, and again, that begins with our hope that employers are keeping good records, which assists both them and the workers in making a judgment about whether, in the period of time we're investigating, whether workers have been compensated for their time at least meeting the minimum standards of the Fair Labor Standards Act.
Now, a lot of these workers have a contract labor agreement with the employer ahead of time based on compensation, based on productivity, and not necessarily hourly. So, does the Department of Labor have authority to change the terms of these compensation agreements?
No, we do not. And in fact, our whole statute and our procedures in the agricultural area are built around the fact that we know that piece rates are a common practice used throughout agriculture in lots of different industries. And what we're trying to ascertain, again, is whether workers have been compensated to the minimum standards provided in the law, which is the minimum wage in the Fair Labor Standards Act. That requires us to have very careful, specific procedures to ascertain whether that's been attained, and you're quite right, in agriculture, that often is the piece rate. So, that's the basis we make our comparison in trying to very carefully see if each worker has been paid according to the piece rate compensation system in such a way that it meets the minimum standards required by the law.
Now, in a recent enforcement action, Department of Labor insisted that a farmer waive all rights for future action on the issue, including appeal. Now, is this the policy of the department, to intimidate farmers into waiving their constitutional due process rights?
I think you're describing a consent judgment, which is a very common occurrence where a court reaches agreement with all the parties, where parties agree to that, and one of the provisions of a consent judgment is that the final agreement will be respected by the parties. So, it's—if you're speaking about a consent judgment, which is entered in voluntarily by the parties in conjunction with a court, those typically say that the agreement or the terms of the agreement—
Seven seconds left. What about—was there on the ground in this case, or has the department ever asked a farmer, said, "Here's your fine, but if you promise not to appeal, it'll be X amount, it'll be less"?
That would not be—the procedure would not be undertaken in that way, certainly in regards to what I would want our investigators to do, and I think the way they do carry out, that we would get to that stage through a different process than your question implies.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Hartzler. I can tell you, that is exactly what has been done by other agencies. I know where they levied a multi-hundred-thousand-dollar fine and said, "But if you'll write us a check for $25,000," for example, "we'll waive all of the other fees." That has been done, I know, by the EPA in my district with regard to paperwork violations. Ms. Dwayne.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to thank Chairman Scott and Ranking Member Schrader for holding this hearing, and thank you, Dr. Wile and Commissioner Avakin, for being here today. No one here would condone violations of the Fair Labor Standards Act, but the actions taken by DOL in regards to these cases appear to be egregious. My district in Washington State is one of the largest berry growers per capita in the country. This is especially true for raspberries, increasingly so for blueberries, and I'm very concerned that we could see these actions repeated in my district against farmers who play by the rules. It seems like this investigative method leaves our constituents with a false choice: admit guilt where there may not be any, and pay a hefty fine to save your crop, or fight the case and lose the crop. For example, a blueberry farmer in Washington State was cited for employing underage children, which that farmer denied. However, that farmer, the employer, could not verify or dispute the violation claimed by DOL because DOL refused to release their notes. Hot goods was invoked on 26,000 pounds of blueberries, and a 30-day hot goods hold was placed on the rest of the crop worth about $35,000. The employer was forced to admit guilt. So, Dr. Wile, the scenario—and we've heard many of these scenarios before—you have someone in a situation where to go for due process, they have to potentially give up their crop. Does that seem fair? Is that an appropriate action to be taken?
Thank you, Congresswoman. Let me—I feel like I should clarify the process because I think—I want to be—
Well, I just want to—but this is—the fundamental part is that before someone's had a right to go to court or to defend themselves, you've taken product that is perishable, only is it a few days that it may be, you know, available in the market for them to get price back.
Right.
Do you ever think it's okay to take that product? Do you understand the situation you're putting a farmer in who may very well have a strong defense, and if they defend themselves, they may not get their crop back?
And thank you. What I wanted to clarify is, our investigators cannot block shipment of the goods. They're not allowed to do that. They are—they—when they find violations in the course of an investigation, when they meet with the employer, they ask the employer to voluntarily restrain shipment of that goods until the situation can be resolved. If a resolution can be made—which it is in the vast majority of cases—the shipment of goods are released, and everything proceeds with both compliance, assuring both the workers that they have received what they are entitled, and that other farmers who are complying with the law are not put at it—
But an agreement means an admission of guilt for someone who may feel like they have a case and are not guilty of the violation they've been accused of?
If the parties feel that they are not—that the violations are inappropriate, they are within their rights, and if we feel we need to with—not allow the goods to flow, we need to go to a federal court. And in a federal court, both the employer, the grower, the farm labor contractor—
But you understand that every day, for a perishable product like a berry, every day, you are preventing that product from going to market while someone—in the end, if someone goes to court and finds out that they are not guilty of the infraction—
Right.
Are you going to pay them back for the product that they weren't able to take to market?
We are very aware, and again, this is why we use it only in very specific instances of the perishability of the product, and that's why we move quickly to resolve the problem as quickly as possible for the benefit of the workers and of the growers involved.
But it's not— In a perishable case, without defining what quickly means, that product is gone, that farmer, who, if found not guilty, now has lost their product unfairly, and that can't be returned to them. Isn't there another method that can be used without taking their crop?
Again, we can ask the parties to voluntarily refrain from shipping—
But they don't have—
We do not seize the good. We are not allowed—we are not authorized by the statute to seize the good. We can go to a court in the case that we can't resolve, which are—what are, when we have used this authority, significant cases? I would point out that the typical—the average hot goods case has back wages due that are six times the level of overall agricultural cases, that the number of employees affected are eight times—
And I—and I—but I—
These are significant cases.
But, Dr. Wile, I just want to point out that we're not talking about all hot goods cases. We're talking about very specific cases of perishable, only perishable goods, because, once again, the value will be gone by the time there comes to resolution, and I've run out of time, so I yield back. But I think it's important for you to distinguish, because we feel like there's a big difference between those with perishable goods and what might happen versus other goods where they may still retain their entire value and their return.
I understand that.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I yield back.
Could I just clarify, Congresswoman, that the statistics I gave you were specific for agriculture?
It's not just agriculture. Perishable goods, not all of agriculture, has the same deadline that, for example, certain fruits and vegetables have. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Before I recognize Mr. Yoho, Dr. Wile, she asked you a very specific question, whether or not the agency would reimburse the farmer for the loss of their value. And the answer to that is no. You did not answer the question, but the agency has never reimbursed the farmer for the loss, have they?
The agency has enforced the act, which is our primary responsibility—
Have you ever reimbursed the farmer for their loss from your action?
I would have to—I am not aware of a situation like that.
Thank you. Mr. Yoho?
I want to continue on that, Mr. Chairman, and I appreciate it, because I think this is something that needs clarification, and that was one of my questions. If a hot goods provision is used against a farmer and a perishable crop is prevented from being sold, and you said it's voluntarily, but as we've heard and as I've experienced in our area, you know, with blueberries, watermelons, roll crops, if that is voluntarily giving up, and the investigation goes on, and that farmer is found not guilty, that he did not break any laws, who's responsible for that—the price of that crop? If charges are brought against him, and he voluntarily gives it to you, turns it over, but then with the investigation, they say, "Well, there's no violation here, and that crop's gone, the value is zero," who pays for that crop?
We would not, Congressman, enter into the—the whole use of the hot goods would occur after an investigation is completed and where there is—
Well, in the case of the Oregon farmers—
—findings of a violations—
With the blueberries, wasn't it, Dr. Schrader? The blueberries, that crop, was that not held up and not sold?
The—there was an investigation—
Did the crop get held up?
Well, again, I don't want to talk about the particulars of that case because it's in litigation.
Okay, just a hypothetical—
In any of our agricultural cases where we've invoked the hot goods, the sequence would be, we find significant and systemic violations. We enter into discussions with the employer and the farm labor—or the farm labor contractor about our findings. In the course of those findings, or in course of those discussions, we would indicate that we think there are goods that are hot, that might also be because of not just back wages, but because of child labor violations.
Well, I've had situations where they've come on watermelon farms, and that's—you've got a short period of time, you've brokered those melons, and if something comes up like this, and you're out there, and you say, "Hey, we've got labor violations here," that farmer, according to you, has the right to voluntarily relinquish his crop or sell it. If he voluntarily relinquishes it on the threat of he's under violation, and then it's proven he's not, and that crop doesn't go anywhere, there's a lost crop. Somebody's lost some money on that, and there should be retribution back to the farmer if he's found innocent. I want to move on to something else. You stated between fiscal year 2009 and 2013, wage and hour concluded nearly 7,500 ag investigations. Do you have figures for the years of 2005 to 2009, the amount of active investigations that were concluded? And if not, can you give me those?
I could. I'd be happy to give you those.
I would love to see those.
Sure.
Again, I come from a large agricultural area—
Yes.
—and there is that big differentiation—differentiation between perishable and non-perishable, like a peanut. You know, you can plant or harvest a peanut, and you don't have to rush it right away like you would a blueberry to a storing locker. And what we've seen in our area is there's been an escalation in the Department of Labor investigations in these fields where there's migrant labor, and I understand why you're doing that, but there's almost been like a rabid response. I've been around agriculture since I was 16 years of age, and we have seen just a ramp up in the amount of investigations with this administration, and I base that on talking to a person at HHS and the Department of Labor, and I asked them if they've increased the amount of investigations. They says, "Oh, yes, under this administration, we were ordered to increase those." And I want to know why that is.
Well, let me speak about what we have done in terms of wage and hour in targeting our investigations, and it's very true, since the beginning of the administration, we have focused on sectors of the economy where we find evidence—and again, we're very data-driven—of higher levels of violations, and have focused our attention, given the fact that we have only 1,100 investigators in 7.3 million workplaces to investigate, on industries, including some agricultural industries where we find high levels of violations. So, the trend you're describing is part of a larger emphasis on focusing our very limited resources on the industries and employers where we believe the violations are highest, and that's, I think, very consistent with the basics of our statute in terms of both protecting workers and responsible employers who are playing by the rules.
And I get the same feedback from the producers in our area that the Department of Labor treats our producers like they're guilty and needed to be proven innocent, and I'm hearing that in Florida, I'm hearing it in Washington and Oregon, where Ms. Hartzler's from, and I'll save my questions for the next round.
Dr. Wile, before I recognize Ms. Custer, I think profiling is illegal. Ms. Custer.
Thank you, Chairman Scott and Ranking Member Schrader for holding this hearing, and thank you to our witnesses today. I believe that enforcing our labor standards and ensuring the equitable treatment of farm workers is incredibly important, but I'm concerned about the heavy-handed actions taken by the Department of Labor when it comes to the cases that we've heard today in Oregon. I spent a lot of time over the past year talking to farmers in New Hampshire, and I've heard quite a bit about the difficulties they face trying to comply with shifting requirements and disagreeable staff at the Department of Labor. I believe in enforcing our wage and hour laws, but I also think that the Department of Labor needs to start making a greater effort to work with the states and with the farmers in this process. My questions this morning are for the Commissioner. Can you talk to me about your concerns with the approach that the Department of Labor took in these cases, and whether there are other tools that could be used to ensure that farmers are adhering to our labor standards?
Mr. Chair, Congresswoman, there are many different investigative tools and prosecutorial tools that can be used other than hot goods in the thousands of investigations we do and in what I'm sure is the tens of thousands of investigations that the United States Department of Labor does. Statistically speaking, virtually none of those use the hot goods. And so, you do a full investigation, oftentimes based on probable cause that a violation is occurring somewhere. After you have a substantial amount of evidence that a violation has occurred, you issue charges, and then you enter a prosecutorial process in which the respondent, like a defendant, has a chance to then defend themselves. That would be the typical process used, and that works very well with respect to prosecuting bad actors and protecting workers. In this particular case, we have, I suppose, two primary concerns. One is that, first, we disagree that—we think that there's an inherent problem with the use of the hot goods provision with respect to perishable items, even if you do go through the right process of getting a hot goods order. But in the cases in Oregon, it involved not the attainment of a hot good order, but the threat of one, and that the farmers could avoid the legal process of the hot goods motion if they simply paid up and paid up quickly. That disparity in power is what causes the constitutional due process and, we think, search and seizure and Commerce Clause problems. The second concern we have is— The second concern we have is, post the federal district court's order vacating the consent judgments in Oregon, we do not know what the status of the damages are, where the money is, and are unclear why, given the order vacating the judgments, the money has not been returned to the farmers.
Well, and it seems to me, as an attorney and a litigator, that, just as a practical matter, doesn't it make more sense to you that the, if the goods were sold, then the farmer would be in a position to pay whatever fines were due if that person was found to be in violation? But the whole point of our judicial process, innocent until proven guilty, is that you have the opportunity to make your case, and I, I'm quite confident that the legal sanctions would be sufficiently strong to discourage violations, but it just, my time is coming up, but I'm just wondering your comment, doesn't that just make more common sense?
Mr. Chair, Congresswoman, yes, it makes common sense, but you also are implicitly hitting on a very important legal concept with, that also is related to the deprivation of due process rights here. In a hot goods action, if hypothetically, the government were to take the goods, sell the goods, or in some, in some way obtain the money that it's worth, that would be one thing, because then the money could be used to pay the workers, or could be held in trust while the investigation is completed, and, and if the investigation exonerates the farmer, the money could be returned. The difficulty here is with what, the legal term of conversion. In this type of a situation where the blueberries, for instance, are held in a warehouse for more than three or four days and possibly spoil, the value of the goods has been converted to zero.
Right.
And there, not only is not then money available in order to pay the workers, but there is no value of the product left either for the government, for the farmer, or for the workers, and that conversion of the goods is what creates the imbalance of power leading to the deprivation of constitutional rights.
Thank you very much, and thank you for making the trip out here. That was precisely my point, and you said it much more clearly, and thank you, Mr. Chair. I yield back.
Thank you. Mr. Lamoffo?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, we've burned over an hour already in this committee. Dr. Weil, since we can't talk specifically about a case, have you ever had a, like a traffic violation or some sort of thing where you've had to receive a ticket for something to do with your car, whether it's parking, or speeding, or some other thing like that? You ever got one of those?
I feel I should have advice of counsel before answering that question.
That would, that would fit with the hour so far.
I, I have.
Okay. And so, have you ever felt like some of those were maybe not just, and you, you're sending the, you send the ticket in there with a payment, and you want to fight it in court? You ever done that?
I, I have.
Okay, yeah, me too. But I always get this yucky feeling when I send the check in with the thing, with, with the notice, the summons, whatever you call it, that, that my chances of getting my check back aren't very good, because I'm probably going to be found guilty anyway. I think that's the same feeling, only multi-extrapolated, that these growers face, is that I'm probably not going to get a good shake at due process here. And then when you, when you invoke hot goods, and you got a perishable product, I'm a farmer in my real life, too. I happen to farm rice, so perishability is a lot different than it is for fruit growers and other crops of that nature, milk like that. And so, you've bought berries at the store, right? Blueberries, strawberries, raspberries especially, right?
Yes, sir.
And so, when you get them home, if you kind of forget about them back in the refrigerator for a couple of days, and you get that white fuzz starts growing on them, right? So you feel like, boy, that was sure a short shelf life for my berries. And so, actions like this just take a big chunk off the back end of the shelf life of the farmer's product he's trying to get to the market. And I don't see how in the world that, if you've brought an action to them, that it could be seen as fair in any fashion. And why in the world, answer me this question, why would they want to voluntarily hold on to that crop, whether it's in their field, or maybe a warehouse that they're paying by the hour or by the day to keep it cold stored, and maybe it's a warehouse that has a fast turnover, that you got to get this product out because the next farmer's coming in? Why would they voluntarily keep that if they feel that they're in the right, and they got to get this product to market before the white fuzz starts growing on it we've all experienced in our refrigerator?
So, and, and my staff knows I love analogies as well, so if I could go back to your first analogy and then go to your second analogy, when I make the decision whether or not to contest a traffic ticket in my hometown, I do it on the basis of a trust that if I do decide to contest that ticket, I will get due process. Our procedures are to provide growers, or employers generally, that same confidence in the process. That's why we have these procedures that are very carefully undertaken.
But, sir, the government's not holding on to your car in impound, in this case, so you can't get back and forth to work, your wife, get your kids to school, or whatever's going on with that.
And neither do we seize the goods. We are not allowed to seize the goods.
But see, you talked about voluntarily holding on to the goods, why would they do that when they have that timeline? You get the timeline, again, you, you get how stuff rots in the fridge or in cold storage. Why would they do that?
And that's why our investigators move with alacrity in those situations.
Alacrity?
Because we know that the goods are perishable, and we're very cognizant of that, and that's why we have used this particular provision in very few of the 7,500 cases involved in it.
When, when you're that case, it's a big deal. When you're that case, and so you either sign it, sign on the dotted line saying, I basically admit guilt, and I, I put, I pay a fine, or put it in escrow. See, what I don't understand is that, how come you can't recognize the timeliness of this and still have your investigation ongoing?
Mm-hmm.
And if they're fined, or if they're guilty, you can fine the heck out of them later.
Right.
But, you know, go through your investigation, but why would you have the grower held up with a perishable product that's going to have fuzz growing on the customer's refrigerator? They may not buy that brand anymore, from that store anymore, because they don't like that berry now.
Right, right.
Because of this holdup on a hot good that is a perishable product? That makes no sense to me. Do you get that, sir?
I understand what you're saying, Congressman, and that's why, very often, where we feel the discussions are moving in a positive direction, we use escrow for precisely the reasons you've described.
How many days between these discussions and escrow? What if it's on a weekend? What if, you know, how's all this work?
It would depend on the particular instance that we're discussing, but there is, in the vast, vast majority of cases, those goods move, including the cases in Oregon, those goods moved, they weren't withheld ultimately, there was a resolution.
Under a possible threat of being taken to court and having a procedure done in court to cost them more and more money unless they just give in and go with that? Mr. Chairman, I'll yield back to the next round of questions.
Dr. Weil, you stated that you had only used this 28 times. Is that correct?
That our, our records in our investigation show the hot goods provision being used 28 times since 2001. Yes, sir.
How many times have the people in your agency threatened to use it?
The, the, my understanding of how we keep these records is that these indicate times that the hot goods provision have been invoked by our investigators.
In other words, you have no idea how many times your investigators have threatened the farmer with them?
It would be against our protocols, again, I wouldn't, I wouldn't call it threatening employers or farmers, it would be getting to the point where they're being asked to restrain shipment of the goods because of the findings of the investigation.
If a, if an 800-pound gorilla comes up to you and says, give me your wallet, or I'm going to take your car, and you hand over the wallet, did you voluntarily give the wallet?
I, I...
That's a hypothetical, we won't waste time on that, but I will get to the specific, some specifics, if you will.
Yes.
First of all, the only reason that this is still in court is because the agency is using taxpayer dollars to appeal the ruling of the court, which the farmer, again, the American citizen, had to use their private dollars to defend themselves against their government. And that is, the government is the 800-pound gorilla in, in this case, and, and the farmer won, and, and I quite honestly think you're trying to teach that farmer a lesson in that if you stand up for your rights, we're going to pummel you as the 800-pound gorilla. You stated that there have been 7,500 investigations.
Yes, sir.
$20 million collected from those investigations for 46,600 workers. So your average investigation yields $2,666. How much do you spend on those investigations? How much have you spent of taxpayer funds on this court case?
On the 7,500 cases, or on the, on the cases?
On the 7,500 investigations, how much have you spent?
I would be happy to provide you those figures, I couldn't say offhand.
I, I would appreciate that, and I'd also appreciate, I'd like to know how much the government has spent in this case, that, again, the court has already ruled in favor of the farmer, and the farmer is having to use their private funds, because you, as the 800-pound gorilla in this case, have chosen to push them into the appeals process. You know that you can spend them into bankruptcy. You know you can spend that farmer into bankruptcy, and there should be recourse for the citizens of this country when the 800-pound gorilla does anything and everything that they can to take everything that they have. There should be recourse, and there's an Equal Access to Justice Act that's out there, and quite honestly, I think that the farmer should be compensated for everything that you've done to them, and I think it should come out of the payroll of your agency. And if, if that happened one or two times, then a lot of this stuff would stop. Mr. Vacian, thank you for being here. Have you ever seen, let me, when is the first time that you saw the hot goods orders used with regard to perishable products?
The, Mr. Chair, the three farms that it was used in, in Oregon, that Congressman Schrader spoke about, is the first time that we experienced the use of hot goods in Oregon, to my knowledge.
And, and what dates were those? These, do you?
It was two years ago, forgive me for not coming up with the exact dates.
And, and they used it on three separate farms?
That's correct. I, I might add, Mr. Chair, too, that at the time, we took a very strong position against the use of hot goods, articulated that to the U.S. Department of Labor, and they have not used the hot goods provision in Oregon since, to our knowledge.
Thanks, thanks for standing up for the farmers. And what are the common denominators? They have, they have acknowledged in their testimony here today that they have specific things they're looking at and who they're going to target with their investigations. Have you seen a common denominator with who they're targeting and their profiling of who they're going after?
No, Mr. Chair.
I yield the remainder of my time.
Mr. Chair, I should clarify, I don't have any knowledge one way or the other with respect to that.
Mr. Schrader?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioner Vacian, the Department of Labor has indicated that, that this hot goods authority is absolutely necessary to compel compliance among producers with perishable goods. It refuses, apparently, to, to think of alternatives. In your judgment, in your experience, are there, could compliance of potential violators be achieved with alternate means besides imposition of hot goods on perishable products?
Mr. Chair, Congressman Schrader, oftentimes when you're trying to catch a bad actor, it's not an easy thing to do, and, as I said earlier, it's important to aggressively prosecute bad actors, not only to protect workers, but to make sure that, that businesses that do follow the rules have a level playing field, and you want to use every tool at your disposal in order to protect the good businesses as well as the workers. However, in our system, administrative or judicial, there is always a balance between respecting the constitutional rights of people that are in that type of an investigative or prosecutorial process with the need to protect the workers. In, in our judgment, the use of hot goods with perishable items creates a situation in which there is much, much too much leverage on the part of the government to extract whatever type of agreement would be necessary from a suspected, not proven, bad actor, and that huge imbalance of power creates a constitutional due process problem. And so, we do believe that whether or not that kind of leverage would be effective in getting a result, it is just inherently the wrong method to use, and that we should rely on the other tried and true and tested methods that we use in investigations and prosecutions.
In the case with the Oregon farmers in 2012, the department refused consistently to give many, any details virtually of their investigation and the alleged violations. What's the policy for the Oregon Department of Labor disclosing details of alleged violations to individuals?
Mr. Chair, Congressman Schrader, and we, we do, between our Civil Rights Division and our Wage and Hour Division, we do, on average, over 5,000 investigations a year. We receive over 60,000 calls a year from Oregonians with questions about their rights on the job or in housing, and, like I said, respond to about 20,000 calls a year from Oregon businesses that are looking for cooperative help in navigating the right of state and federal law. So we have a good deal of experience in fielding questions from business and from the public in these types of situations. Generally speaking, what we look for is whether or not there is probable cause that some type of a violation is occurring. So either somebody calls and says, gives us their story of what's happening to them on the job, or we get a tip from a third party that there might be violations occurring, and if we believe it's credible evidence, we send an investigator or a team of investigators in order to interview the worker, to get documents from the employer, interview the employer. If we believe that there is substantial evidence that a legal violation has occurred, we issue formal charges, and at that point, enter a prosecutorial system in which we, on behalf of the people of Oregon, are trying to obtain damages for the individual we believe was harmed, and in that process, the employer has the ability to defend themselves in front of an administrative law judge, with my position of Labor Commissioner being the eventual decider of the case. That's the process we use.
Sounds like a very different process than what we've heard outlined with the Federal Department of Labor at this time. How closely does the Department of Labor, Federal Department of Labor, work with you in investigations? My understanding, based on your testimony, there's, there's more investigations ongoing in Oregon as we speak, several other farms being checked into. How, how much lead time did you get on these, these folks coming to, to Oregon? How do, how do you work with the Department of Labor?
And, Mr. Chair, Congressman Schrader, in the, the cases of the three blueberry farms a couple of years ago, we didn't know about those investigations until they were occurring. I must say that Dr. Weil has very graciously, in recent weeks, called me personally, extended his hand in a cooperative effort for our agencies to work together in the future to use the best of our, our resources as efficiently as possible, and I am quite encouraged by the reaching out that he's done in, in recent weeks.
So if I may ask, how much notice did you get for the investigations that are ongoing right now? You talked with him a few weeks ago, apparently. How much did he talk to you about the investigations? And obviously, the department plans, you know, months, maybe a year in advance, is going through the criteria, Dr. Weil has, has indicated. Did he talk to you about coming out to Oregon at that time?
Mr. Chair, Congressman Schrader, I, I think you're referencing some recent investigations in the last couple of weeks on 10 or 11 blueberry farms in Oregon. We didn't have any idea of those investigations until they were occurring, so we're looking, we're looking forward to a very cooperative future with the Department of Labor.
Yeah, it doesn't sound like things have changed very much, with all due respect. Dr. Weil, if the Chair will indulge me just a little bit here, two, two points I'd like to hone in on here, going, going forward. You've testified that your agency's done over 600 education events across the country and trying to inform, you know, producers, manufacturers, whoever, about their rights. Department of Labor has had a memorandum of understanding with the Oregon Farm Bureau along those lines. It was actually canceled by the Department of Labor a few years ago, was specifically designed to help farmers know how to comply with the wage and hour laws of our laws of our country. In 2012, the Oregon Farm Bureau had asked the Department of Labor, the Portland Director Gencos, with the Western Director Rosales Perez, to renew the MOU, you know, for education. You know what they were told? I'll quote you here. "We're an enforcement agency, not an education agency." How do you reconcile that with your statement and what you alluded to before?
Thank you, Congressman. The spirit of what I spoke about at the beginning, the 600 outreach cases that I discussed are specific to agriculture, I can describe to you 24 different outreach efforts that we've done just in the western region, many in Portland, over the recent period of time where we have done outreach specifically to employers and farm labor contractors.
Why in my region is that not happening or is that not appropriate?
That is part. No, many of these are in Portland, and I'd be pleased to provide you a list of these events.
It seems like the director out west and in the Portland area in particular is not reading your memos and does not agree with you. I'd appreciate if you'd reach out to them and talk with them a little more detail.
I'd be happy to do so.
The other concern I have, was alluded to in testimony, is where's the money? Where's the farmer's money? Court vacated your decision. Where's their money?
Well, the court, that particular instance is still in litigation, so I'm not quite sure.
Well, where's the money? I mean, your agency has their money. Where is it?
The money is kept in the treasury. Oh, it's kept in the treasury.
It's not been returned to them, even though the court has vacated your decision?
Well, that case is in litigation, as you know, and so be inappropriate at this point until the, until, until the process runs its course.
I respectfully disagree on that account. How did you determine how many workers there were? You know, the farmers have contested successfully in court that they paid all their workers what they were due. How did you determine that there were 1,100 additional workers out there? You talked about time studies. This is one of your time studies that you did?
Sure. Again, I can't speak about the particulars of this case. I can say in any agriculture investigation, there is a process where investigators go to the fields in order to ascertain the number of workers who are present.
How do they do that? How do they do that, generally speaking?
By basically going to the fields, counting workers, speaking to workers, and then speaking with employers, looking at payroll records, and basically triangulating.
Then how do you figure out that there's missing workers? How do you figure out? What does the agency do to figure out there's missing workers?
Well, the calculations are based on an assessment of the number of workers in the field at the time of the investigation.
How do you get that calculation is what I'm asking?
Oh, I see. By counting people. I mean, by...
If they're not there, how do you count them?
If they're not there, they wouldn't be counted.
So then why is the agency worried about 1,100 workers that weren't there?
Well, again, that regards the particulars of the specific cases litigation.
Well, I can actually tell you, you don't know your own procedures. You actually have a model that you use. There's a model that you use. The model figured out that it was impossible for workers to pick more than 60 pounds of berries in an hour. The model determined that. They didn't go to the field. They didn't talk to the workers about how many can you pick in an hour. That wasn't done. It was based on a model. There was no time study done at all. Matter of fact, there was a time study done after the fact by a former Department of Labor investigator. He determined in a third picking, not the first, which is usually the most bountiful, but the third picking, that the lowest amount of berries picked was over 100 pounds. Top picker, 196 pounds. That's the real world, not a model. That's the real world. How many workers do you suppose this investigation has found out of these 1,100 alleged workers identified with this bogus model that you've used?
Representative Schrader, I can't speak to the particulars of that. I can, I can...
I thought you might say, I can tell you, 70, 74. And how did you, how does the department determine if a worker, generally speaking, was on the farm and should get paid? How do you find that worker?
That's very clear, sir.
Oh, good.
When we undertake investigations, we go out to the fields, we interview workers in the fields. We also look at the payroll records of the growers. This is precisely why record-keeping is an absolute bedwast-
How do you find the workers that you are, that you claim aren't on the payroll?
It is, it is one of the challenges of enforcing the law entrusted to our agency.
How do you find them? What do you do? I'm asking just a basic question.
Yes, sir. And we use, I am, I'm attempting to, sir. We use the payroll records that the employer is supposed to keep. Often, in significant and difficult cases where one of the major problems is farmers have failed to follow the statute's requirements of record-keeping, it makes it difficult to follow up on those workers. That's precisely why in the agricultural industry, not only do we need to move quickly...
You're not answering the question, doctor. I'm asking you, how do you find these workers that you claim were on the farm? What is the, you don't have a policy apparently, you don't have a policy.
If we don't, yes, sir. Yes, sir. If we don't have...
It's not very clear, and it's not simple, like you said two minutes ago.
If we, if we don't have payroll records maintained by the employer as required by the law, we have to use other means to find those workers. We use, for instance, we have agreements with the Mexican consulate to have them help us locate workers who were denied their wages.
Well, I can tell you in this case in Oregon, how you did it. You're apparently, with all due respect, not very knowledgeable about the policy or you don't have a policy, which is a shame. They advertise in local paper or in the radio, hey, did anyone work at such-and-such farm during this time period? And to the credit of the members of my community in the state of Oregon, there were only 70 folks that said, yeah, yeah, I worked there. Please give me some money.
Right.
Out of 1,100 opportunities, only a few people walked up. Maybe a couple of them were on the farm, I don't know. There's no way to actually know. Where is my farmer's money? Does that money revert back to the treasury and not go to those farmers at some point in time?
Congressman, because of the nature of the migratory workforce in agriculture, the challenges you describe are very real. And that's why we have to use a number of different methods to try to locate workers in general in the agricultural industries, which are sometimes hard to find, particularly where the employer has not kept adequate records.
Mr. Wile, you keep not answering the question, and that does not help you in your case. I'll yield back, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. I would like, Mr. Chairman, to have this put into the record that I've requested from the Department of Labor, Dr. Wile, to have the figures for the investigations, numbers for fiscal year 2005, 2009, if sir, if you would give me that. And I want to kind of build a little bit on this because this is something that's happened in our state. If a producer from a state uses a labor contractor for his labor needs, that's certified by the federal government or the state?
Yes, sir.
Are they certified by both entities, federal government and state, or just state? The labor contractor?
By the federal government, sir.
All right, so they're certified by the federal government. Is there an additional, Mr. Vacian, is there an additional certification they must get from a state, your state?
Our, Mr. Chair, Congressman, our state certifies farm labor contractors.
In addition to the federal government?
I actually don't know about the federal governments involved with the...
All right, well, he just said that they, they...
But we do.
All right. Whose responsibility, if I'm the producer, and say I use between 45 and 50 workers in a growing season, and I'm contracting with a contractor that is certified by the federal government, who, and he gives me a bill at the end of the week, this is amount of hours or if it's a day rate, this is the amount that we pay out daily. Whose responsibility is it to track the hours of the individuals if it's a fluctuating workforce? Is it the farmer or is it the contract laborer?
In terms of federal procedures, that's a determination of joint employment that you're raising. And in cases where an economic realities test would speak to the fact that both parties are essentially employers, both parties would be required.
But my employer, I'm hiring the contractor for the labor. He's hiring the laborers. So you're saying that I'm also hiring the laborers individually and not just through the contractor? So my responsibility is to track all the hours as the producer?
As you know, in agriculture, those kinds of relationships are very common, and joint employment is often found...
They are. But what is the law state? Who's, I mean, are you saying both of us are responsible according to law or just the contractor?
If, if on the basis of the particular facts, and particularly in terms of the activities undertaken by both parties, they are both exerting employment-type relationships with the workers in the field, they would both be responsible.
But I'm only paying one entity. I'm paying the contractor. There's, the reason I bring that up is there's a case right now where we've got a guy, they went after the contractor, he didn't have the money, and so they sued the farmer. It went on for four years. It's ruined the farmer, and then he's just got a settlement or a judgment of $100,000 that's pretty much ruined him. Young fellow, young farmer. And it was brought on by a nonprofit Florida Rural Legal Services that's, it was, it just seemed like intimidation is what it was because it came down to, and this is one of my other questions, if you have an investigator found to offer a decreased fine for a violation if you pay now, and you said they're not allowed to do that, if you were to find that, that one of your investigators did that, do you have the authority to fire that employee?
If we, if, certainly if an investigator was undertaking activities that are against the procedures that we have established and the training and the guidelines and the field operations handbooks and a number of different sub-regulatory pieces we have, an investigator not following those protocols would obviously be subjected to discipline.
Can you fire him?
Well, it would, it would, again, be based on the particular facts of the case. But in a case of significant violation, disciplinary actions could include firing that worker.
Okay. Because we hear all the time, you can't fire a government employee. And certainly, I was there on Foreign Affairs when Ms. Clinton says you can't fire anybody in the government. And that's something the public doesn't, you know, like because we're accountable in the private sector. And I think I have one last question. The laws and the regulations that get written, that come out to the farmer, a lot of times don't seem like they're benefiting the farmer to make them more productive, or not more productive, but to protect their rights. I know we want to protect the rights of the worker, and we also should protect the ability of the farmer to farm, to produce a product, to hire the worker. But, I mean, we've got people that come down out of the Department of Labor investigating porta-potties on a farm, and they're using GPS measuring devices. And if they're over 10 feet apart or 10 feet beyond where they're supposed to, it's an automatic fine. If they've got a trash can in their field for trash and the hole's bigger than four inches on top diameter, it's a fine. If you take a plastic bottle out in a field picking watermelons, this is a fine. But if I take an open container of water, it's not. I mean, these things just don't seem common sense. You know, I want somebody to have water in the field. I think sometimes we overlook what we're trying to accomplish. I want people hydrated in the field. And whether they've got a bottle of water or an open glass of water, does it really matter? And if the hole in my garbage can is six inches versus four, does that really matter?
Right. If I may...
Can I respond, Congressman? Or?
His time has expired. I apologize. Mr. Costa.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate holding this hearing as it relates to the impact of enforcement activities on specialty crops, of which we grow about 300 in California. I have votes that are imminent down the hall in Natural Resources, so I don't know if I'm going to be able to complete my five minutes of questions. I will submit them, but let's have a go at it here. Administrator Will, as you know, or I hope you know, 75% to 80% of California's farm work is done through farm labor contractors. And I want to pursue the same line of questioning that our previous colleague was asking. These contractors are employers for all the workers, but when the Department of Labor goes after a contractor based on these FLSA allegations, the department will also put hot goods order on the grower or the packing house to whom the contractor is supplying the workers, forcing the grower or the packer to pay off contractors' back wages even though they are not the employer and not required to make these payments. What steps is the Department of Labor taking to determine who the actual employer is before extracting these payments from the grower or the packers? And why are you going after those folks who obviously are not employing the workforce?
Thank you, Congressman. We have established economic realities tests and factors that we look at in order to ascertain whether or not there is joint employment present, not only in agriculture but in general.
Well, but hold on. The second of joint employment process, and I'm just told that they're now calling the roll, is a situation in which the contractor may have workers in multiple farms, multiple packing houses. That is the way the workforce is employed. And so what, under the law, what, what gives you the approval to make, to attach both?
Both the law and regulations create this series of tests, and courts have also provided a set of tests regarding who decides on what fields will be harvested, time of work, the type of work that should take place, how to perform the work. All of these activities would determine...
You confiscating or putting a hold on these hot goods, you're taking the very livelihood of these packers or these growers. I mean, because these are highly perishable crops. I mean, after a berry crop is harvested, how much time does the farmer have before here she starts suffering economic harm? It's almost immediate. These are perishable products. Would a farm be prevented from selling its harvest and then forced to take months to defend itself in court against claims by the Department of Labor? How do you survive?
As I've said, the investigator does not have the right to seize the good. The investigator, based on the findings of his investigation in consultation with the district and regional office, makes a determination and asks if the grower or the contractor will voluntarily not ship goods until resolution of the violations and compliance is found.
Mr. Chairman, I've got to go vote, but I'm frustrated because I'd really like to have an opportunity to ask questions of both of these two witnesses. I'd like to submit these questions for the record. I'd like to revisit this, and thank you very much. I got to go.
Thank you, Mr. Costa, and I apologize. I know sometimes the schedules run together. We will, we will get both of you his written questions and would appreciate your responses for, and they will be included as part of the official testimony. I don't have any, any further questions at this stage. Before we adjourn, I would invite my ranking member, Mr. Schrader, for any closing remarks that he may have.
I'll be brief and apologize for the length of my questions and testimony heretofore. But this is a big issue, is a very big issue. And it's, as Commissioner Vacian testified and responded to questions, it's about due process. It's a shame when Americans have their own government violate basic due process. The Department of Labor has clearly done that. Doctor, it's been tough for you to even answer some very basic questions about policies for finding workers and where the money is, how you decide what farms you go into and onto, and the fact that, you know, you weren't doing the education out. Maybe there's something wrong with Department of Labor in my region. Maybe that's the problem. I hope you look at that very, very seriously, and I hope the department reviews its procedures. Clearly, there's not much, I guess, that this Congress usually agrees on. But it seems like this entire committee, Republican, Democrat, North, Southeast, and West of this great country, agree Department of Labor is wrong in using this hot goods provision on perishable agricultural products. My esteemed colleague from Oregon, the commissioner, also agrees it's inappropriate. I suspect most labor commissioners around this country would come to that same conclusion. We do have a bill, the chair and I have put out. I would hope there'd be interest in Congress in co-sponsoring a simple bill which would remove perishable products from the hot goods provision. It was never intended to be that way. I think our forefathers were pretty smart in establishing a lot of the procedures and never could conceive that something like this would be twisted in such a fashion as to prosecute and persecute, coerce, and extort money from hard-working American family farmers. And I yield back, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Schrader. And I, again, want to reiterate what I said at the start, that I nor, nor do I believe anybody else on this committee, Democrat or Republican, condones violations of the fair...
else on this committee, Democrat or Republican, condones violations of the Fair Labor Standards Act. And I think that it's been pretty uniform among the committee, as Mr. Schrader said, Democrat and Republican, that we believe this is an unfair use of the hot goods provision. I'm somewhat taken back that the Department of Labor won't simply say, we will use the other tools that we have instead of continuing to use the hot goods provision. Certainly, I hope that our language will pass, and that will leave you with reasonable tools to do what needs to be done to enforce the intent of the law. If I could, I'd give the farmer back his money with interest. If I could, I'd take his legal fees out of your budget and I'd give it back to him. But I can't, and you know it. Every bureaucrat up here knows that we can't do those things. But I will tell you, it has reinvigorated my desire to give, through the equal access to justice language, the rights for the United States citizen, who, when they have been abused by an agency, to seek recourse from that agency for the damage that's been done to them. As for now, I'd like to apologize to those farmers that this has been done to. I think that your constitutional rights were violated. I think that you have been treated unfairly, and I want to say thank you for being willing to put your money and your assets at risk and to challenge this agency and the courts of this land as they needed to be challenged. And the only reason that this issue is still in court is because the Department of Labor has the unlimited resources of the United States government to continue to appeal these decisions when they know good and well that the United States citizen does not. With that, we're adjourned.